One of the shows a couple of months. That was Moby Dick production, I think.
Call the meeting of the President, Board of Trustees, and Plan and Commissioned Order.
Roll call. Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee Peck. Trustee Rassich.
Yes.
Trustee Rippe.
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Calling to order the Plan Commissioned Meeting. Commissioner Seggerbrook.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Here.
Commissioner Renzi. Commissioner Kiefer.
Here.
Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Subkoviac.
Here.
Rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the committee, the whole workshop held on July 14th.
So move.
Second.
For presidential comments, I-
Wait, I haven't done the vote yet, sir, I'm sorry. I'm slow, that's all.
Forgot about that.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Peck's not here. Rassich. Is that a yes? Thank you. Rippe.
Yes.
Bonucci.
Yes.
Motion passes. Presidential comments?
I have none.
You have none?
I want to call those after trustees' comments.
Yes, sir. Trustee comments? Trustee comments?
No, not good.
Seeing done, public comments? Public comments? Back to you, boss.
Okay, we're gonna call the chief to start this off. Got a few, some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give the board a little update on some of the things we've done in the follow-up of the tornado that we experienced on June 30th of this year. As I had mentioned in the, some of the comments directly after that event, we were gonna be looking at some different agencies to critique our preparations and response to the tornado, and also the policies and protocols we utilize, and what, if anything, we can do to improve our severe weather preparedness and information that we disseminate out to the public. In the course of the last couple of weeks, I did meet, along with, again, this is with representatives of our Emergency Management Agency as well, I did meet with the members of the National Weather Service Office located in Romeoville. These are basically the folks that run the regional weather alerting system, the weather system in the Chicagoland area. Obviously, they were the ones that issued the warnings, the severe thunderstorm warnings, tornado warnings throughout that night. Basically, we met with them to basically see if there's anything that we missed as to why we didn't turn our outdoor warning sirens on that night, if it would have changed the outcome at all, or if there's, moving forward, if there's anything we can do better. The National Weather Service assured me that whether we had set the sirens off or didn't set the sirens off, it would not have changed one thing as far as the ultimate outcome of what had occurred. In fact, by the time the warning was issued by the National Weather Service, they confirmed that the actual storm that, or the cell that produced the tornado was actually outside the village of Plainfield already. It already had passed east of Interstate 55. Touching base with them, though, the discussion went into the actual protocols that are used statewide and actually nationally, as far as the criteria that's used to set the outdoor warning sirens off. Typically, that criteria is strictly a tornado warning that's issued, or a tornado spotted by someone that's certified, and then you set the sirens off. The Weather Service is actually looking to expand that a little bit. In this instance, the storm that went through on June 30th, as of when I met with them last week, because they continue to critique their response to that storm system as well, they've now identified, at that time, they've identified 11 tornadoes that came out of that system. And as you recall, there were very few tornado warnings issued that night, so they are working to, you know, improve their systems as well. But as part of that, we had a discussion about potentially creating a work group between the National Weather Service and local emergency management agencies in this region, to see if there's other criteria we could look that would lead to not only outdoor warning sirens, because again, those are only one avenue to get the warning out, but also activation of the weather alerting radios and other dissemination as far as cellular devices and things like that, as far as getting the warning out. Some of those criteria that we potentially may look at in this work group is maybe basing it on a wind speed alone, not just strictly a tornadic event, but if there's high winds. Because if you recall, in that storm, the city of Morris was hit extremely, they were actually probably the worst city hit in the area, and they actually didn't have a tornado. They had strictly straight line winds, I believe they were 90 to 100 miles an hour, if not higher, but there was not a tornado in Morris, so they're looking at, again, maybe expanding that protocol of when the sirens or when the warnings are actually disseminated. Another thing that I did was I also met with Harold Dameron, who's the director of the Will County Emergency Management Agency, and I met with him to strictly look at our policies and protocols as far as how we deploy our weather spotters, the policies we use for severe weather dissemination to the public, and just severe weather preparedness in the village of Plainfield. Harold, I had contacted him, even when I was still out of town, I had contacted him a day after the tornado actually happened, so between that day and when I met with him last week, he had actually been researching the storm system itself, some of the dynamics that went into it, and he was already familiar with some of our weather alerting procedures that we use in town, because we work very closely with the Will County Emergency Management Agency. Harold basically told me in our meeting that he feels that all our policies and protocols are where they should be. One thing that we did mutually agree on, though, same as with the National Weather Service, is we do need to do a better job of getting PR out there, getting our message out, as far as some of the avenues that our residents can use to get those alerts. Again, they should not be relying on the outdoor warning sirens as their only means, if any means, of getting those warnings. It should be through other means, weather alerting radios, or, again, electronic devices, cell phones, and whatnot. As part of that meeting also, Harold had pointed me in the direction of a nearby community, and I won't mention them, but what this community has done is they've actually worked, joined into a partnership with a corporation who I will not mention either, to try to purchase radios, weather alerting radios, at a reduced rate, that they can then disseminate or distribute out to their residents in that community. I thought it was very viable, I'm still following up with that, they still have the program ongoing, and I'm gonna go down there and meet with them here in the next couple of weeks. But that's potentially something, looking, moving on later into this year and into 2015, that we may be looking to do in conjunction with emergency management, to try to work out something with a corporation that could take the bulk of the financial part, if you will, but then work with us so that we can offer weather alerting radios at a reduced rate to our residents of our community. Additionally, what we are continuing to work on is we are gonna continue to try to get that message, that public relations message out, as far as what residents should be doing preparedness for severe weather, in their house, where they work, outdoors, things along those lines, ways that they can get these warnings. So we're gonna be working through social media, and even the print media, or regular media, if you will, to try to get that message out, starting later this year, and again, going into next year, and continuing on from there. And the last thing I wanted to point out, when I met with the National Weather Service in Will County EMA, it's been several years since we've hosted a severe weather spotting class here in Plainfield, so I basically put a bug in their ear, and they agree with me that in 2015, when they bring out their severe weather spotting certification courses around the Chicagoland area, we will be one of the communities that they'll be looking to host the class, so we'll be able to open that up to our residents of our community, our emergency responders, and people like that, that could come and actually go through the certified course. So I just wanted, again, to update the board a little bit on some of the things we've done since the tornado. It's gonna be an ongoing process. We learned a lot of things in this event. As any event, we try to take good things away, and the bad things, we try to correct, so are there any questions for anyone?
Great report, chief, but one comment, though, as part of your education, you might, like, for fires and so on, people are told to practice so they know heaven's if the fire occurs, even if they don't get an alert, if they see a storm that scares them, they ought to know exactly what to do, and the whole family ought to know that, so you may make that part of your education system going forward, I think it'd be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I think we have a presentation by Mr. Persons. Or comments?
Just to give a brief update related to public works activities, of course, repaving, resurfacing work continues to go on. Hopefully, we'll be wrapped up within the next two weeks, and we'll have that covered. This is mainly MFT funding that's being utilized for this work, and there are some nice benefits for the village that are being completed. We're also working very closely with IDOT related to Route 59 and Route 30. We understand some of the concerns as far as the striping is concerned, basically from Route 30 to northbound Route 59, and from southbound Route 59 onto Route 30, that there are some challenges with traffic, and there was some striping, temporary striping that was put in place. We've contacted IDOT, they're gonna send the engineering crew out this week to evaluate that and put that in as part of the striping plan, and get that completed as soon as possible. And then Route 30, as far as the construction and agreement, will be before the board as soon as staff and IDOT can agree on the terms of the agreement for the construction. We're anticipating on a late fall, early winter date for the reconstruction of Route 30. Most likely, construction won't occur until next spring, so that's the latest on the roadway improvements, and also the striping on Route 59 and Route 30. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, our first item tonight on the joint workshop is the Tribute Memorial. Mrs. Dement is going to make a presentation, and we're gonna seek input regarding the relocation of the Tribute Memorial that's at Central High School to Settlers Park.
Okay, we have met with the Plainfield School District, oh, okay, thank you. We felt that was our first step to find out, one, if they would allow us to move the tribute, if the village of Plainfield would allow us to move it to Settlers Park. I'm here tonight with Mrs. Helen Schwab and Linda Hanley. At this point, we're not an official committee, we really can't be an official committee unless we find we can move forward with the project. I hope you all received the packet of information I sent to the village. For those that may not be aware, if it's all right, I'll do a quick recap. On January 11th, 1984, Jeff Schwab, Helen's son, was serving in the Army during peacetime. He was on an engineering, with an engineering group, moving personnel back and forth, working on a bridge down in the Honduras, Nicaragua. And during that time, they weren't on an armed helicopter, they were shot down. Jeff safely landed the helicopter and was subsequently killed on the ground. Less than a year later, another Plainfield High School graduate was killed, Kevin Kelleher. Members of the community gathered and wanted to know what we could possibly do to help the families, and rather than make it something very specific for them, they asked if we could possibly come together and do something to recognize all the men and women of the armed forces killed during peacetime, and that's how the tribute began. It was finally completed in its entirety in 1988. In November, we had a wonderful dedication ceremony. We then had a drive to complete all the landscaping and the benches and so forth at the old Plainfield High School. It was completed, and three weeks later, we had our tornado. And fortunately, we were able to retrieve the two major portions of the statue, it was repaired, and then it was placed again at Plainfield High School. At that time, we were a much smaller community, we had one high school, and that was a very central location, and we were very grateful to the school for allowing us to place it there. Now, we have three additional high schools, we have, our community's grown by thousands, and we've talked through the years about possibly moving the tribute to a different location. We would love the opportunity to work with the village, obviously, our committee would raise funds to hopefully move the tribute to Settlers Park. We feel it's a community memorial, and we would like a more appropriate setting. Many people who do not have students any longer, or have never had students at Plainfield High School, aren't even aware that the monument is there, so we would like to have you consider our request. And answer any questions you may have.
I think it's a very fitting move. I recall the death of Jeff Schwab and Mr. Kelleher, and I think this is a very fitting tribute to the village of Plainfield.
And I will say, first of all, thank you, ladies, for even taking this task on, but I also am fully in support, I think it would, makes perfect sense that this memorial should be near our other memorial in Settlers Park.
Thank you.
I would certainly agree, I think the way Settlers Park is laid out, and the different history that's already identified there, the other memorials we have, and those we're trying to move there, I would love to see that moved there, because we don't even go to that area anymore for Memorial Day than when we used to head over there, so I think it's fitting to be in Settlers Park, so it's part of the entire tribute.
Let me say something, this year, Jeff's little boy, that was nine months old when he was killed, he graduated from West Point Military Academy in '05. He earned his wings and was flying the same helicopter his dad did, and he's now 30, and he's been in Afghanistan twice, he's been in Okinawa for a year and a half. He was a captain, he just got out, he's engaged and gonna be married, but we're thrilled that, and he came down here for this one, he missed it because of being in Afghanistan and Okinawa, but he wanted to be here, and no one was around this year, and it was like, but we ended up at Settlers Park, and they said, "This is an amazing place," and it is, and I guess this is how we feel, it's, Plainfield is our home, we love Plainfield, we lived in Joliet for many years, but since we've been out here, and having five kids going to the school in Plainfield, and, like I said, Jeff was our number two of the five, and, like I said, this is, it means a lot, and I think Plainfield is such a loving Plainfield. Like I said, we walk around Settlers Park, and it's like, it's amazing, there's no place like this, so I guess I have to put my two cents in about my feelings.
That's perfectly fine, perfectly fine, but that's with Helen, and Linda, and her family, and many others, for years, we've gathered, first at the old memorial on 59, and that was our main monument, but since Settlers Park has been completed, we've had our services here on Memorial Day, then we would go back to the high school and have another salute to those killed during peacetime. And that did not take place this year, and of course, for Helen, it's very, very personal to many of us, it's very personal, to any of those who have people serving in the military, through the years, thousands upon thousands have been lost during peacetime, and we feel it's important that we recognize their service, too.
You know, Mr. Dement, in committee, you know, one thing I'd like to say, I've had my, you have my total support on this particular issue. I always feel very, it's very important to not forget, and oftentimes, when memorials, our place are diffused throughout a community, or diffused in any fashion, people have a tendency of forgetting. I think you can isolate things in their loss, bring them together, Settlers Park is a community park, it's not a high school park, it's a community park, and there's not a better place in order to honor the memorials and the people who were honored when that was established, and so you have my definite support, and I'm really appreciative of all of your efforts. Like I say, do not forget, and you haven't forgot, forgotten, thank you.
Yeah, I'd support the idea, too, I think it's a much better location in many ways, however, you brought up some things which I think probably need to be resolved with staff, how much funds you have to raise, how you maintain things, that sort of thing, and so I guess I would encourage staff to come up, work with you, and come up with a policy which we can then agree, and it'll help to sell this. It puts a little framework around how this is handled, but I think the concept is very good, and it's an appropriate location. There are other memorials around, there's, one of the junior highs has a memorial to a nephew of mine, if you will, who died about, when he was 16, you know, they have a little park outside the school, and it's more appropriate, because that's where he was last there, but for military things, I think Settlers Park is probably better, but let's make sure we know how we can go forward with it in a way that works for you and for us as well, so.
If you would let us know who we should proceed to work with, we would appreciate that, and we'll get everything in order, and when we do, we'll come, I assume, come back to the full board.
Yeah, we'll come to the full board, this is just an advisory right now.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, what we'll do is, based on the feedback tonight, and thank you, everybody, for your feedback, we'll have staff work with Mrs. Dement and the committee, that will now probably get formed, and we'll get together, more than likely, it'll be similar to the work group that helped with the Civil War Monument, which is Kevin Greco and Alan Persons, there are probably a few other things that we will wanna follow up on, just to come up not only with a, with a plan for how the park would get laid out with various different memorials, are there limits to what type of memorials will come to that area, and the like, and so we'll come back together with, not only an individual work plan with the committee, but as well a long-term plan for the park.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you very much for your encouragement.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next item tonight is a roundtable discussion, which is actually where the joint meeting comes to play, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Garrigan, who will kick it off and open it up for discussion.
Thank you. As we see development increasing in Plainfield, as you know, both the Plan Commission and Village Board has recently witnessed a really increase in the number of developments, and specifically significant residential developments, we thought would be appropriate to have a periodic meeting, as you know, we've historically have had periodic workshops between the Plan Commission and Village Board, to discuss basically development trends, and perhaps areas where they can specifically look at as relates to the comp plan or the zoning ordinance, so we thought it would be appropriate this evening, based on what we're witnessing with regards to the development community, because at the end of the day, the development community continues to be very, very bullish on Plainfield, and we anticipate new developments coming through the process in the near future, so we thought this would be a perfect opportunity to have a workshop between the Village Board and the Plan Commission, specifically discuss any areas they would like to look at as relates to the village's comp plan, as you recall, on the Village Board and Plan Commission, with the Plan Commission's input, adopted a revised comp plan last year, so specifically, if there are any opportunities to look at areas of the comp plan, or specifically the strategic plans, you know, the Village Board has approved a five-year strategic plan, are there areas specifically that we could look at in strategic plan to basically address the current trends in development? So staff, again, would invite the Village Board and the Plan Commission to discuss any input they may have as relates to that. As you know, the Plan Commission and Village Board has always had a great relationship and really a positive dialogue historically, and that relationship continues, and this process here, this joint workshop, is really a reflection of that commitment to work together closely, as evidenced by the relationship between the Plan Commission and the Village Board. Specifically, didn't really want to concentrate or discuss specific cases tonight, perhaps that would not be appropriate, but again, to basically ask any of the board members or the Plan Commission to outline those areas that we specifically should look at, are there any areas that perhaps staff should look at as a relationship with regards to long-term planning, as part of the comp plans or strategic plan that we're not looking at? Is there anything that staff perhaps can do to continue the excellent relationship or communication that the Plan Commission and Village Board has always had? Is there anything the staff can do to help improve that? So with that, perhaps I'll turn it over to perhaps any member of the Plan Commission or Village Board who would like to open up any comments they may have as respect to what I've outlined.
Couple of my concerns, we see a trend of late for multifamily, specifically apartment buildings. It seems to me that the density on those, the number, the sheer number of some of those that are being proposed, needs to be kept in check. I think our standards in residential development also need to be kept in check, and I think we're doing that well. One area, one geographical area I mentioned a few months ago, is the corridor near Route 126 and the new Ridge Road alignment. I think the potential for some business in that corridor, once that road is completed, is substantial, and I think we should put that on our radar. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment. I know from my perspective, and most of the board members here, too, we really appreciate the Plan Commission, because you guys, and I'm, excuse the phrase, but you guys do all the grunt work, and you give us somewhat of a finished product for us to review, so I want to really thank you guys, as well as the chairman, for as hard a work as you guys do, because I know you put in many hours on these projects, but with that said, we're not always on the same page, but we're reading from the same book, so like I said, I just wanna thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're gonna be seeing more multifamily projects emerging, and as Trustee Fay has said, we will need to be careful of the density and the architecture and so on, but with the latest restrictions from the government, people are finding it harder and harder to come up with a down payment for a single-family detached home, and so we're gonna, we're gonna be seeing more townhome-type developments, which I think are gonna become the new starter homes, and we're gonna be seeing a lot more proposals, I don't know if they'll be accepted or not, but I think we're gonna see a lot more proposals for multifamily rentals, and it's just a fact of life, and it's a trend, and perhaps as the economy progresses, the trend will go back to more of a proliferation of the single-family detached homes, but for the short term, anyway, many people are finding it difficult to come up with a down payment and meet the requirements for a loan, and their only alternative is to rent, and even the amount of their rental isn't so much the question, many people are renting single-family homes, and we have this stigma against rentals, multifamily rental apartments and so on, and I think if you find, like, I, I'm an engineer, and I deal a lot, I used to deal with statistics and stuff like that, and when the paper would print the tax bills and stuff like that, I'd always check to see who owns, who owns those buildings, where the tax bills are going, and it's surprising, even in 10, 20 years ago, it's surprising how many people didn't own the houses they were living in. The owner was a trust, or a bank, or an individual who owned houses and rented them, and you're gonna see a lot more of that right now. There've been articles in the Tribune Real Estate section about large multinational companies that are going up and buying up foreclosed houses, and houses in distress, and turning around and renting them. And I know on- in distress and turning around and renting them. And I know on my block alone, there's at least, at least three houses that are rentals. And they're just single-family homes, just like anybody else's. And we got this stigma against renters. They have no connection with the community. Ooh, we gotta be afraid of these people. And you might be living next to one and not even know it. So I think we need to soften our, our attitude a little bit on, on rentals. And not get carried away, of course. I, I don't think we need to see huge, huge rental developments. But we need to, we need to take a hard look at our stance on, on multifamily.
And I'm actually, I'm a renter right now. I rent a house that I live in and actually... But building a housing.
That's so obvious, Andy.
Yeah. But building a house in Grand Park. I actually wanted to thank the mayor's point tonight. One of the items that I wanted to talk about actually was process with the applications that come in front of us. At one of the, end of the, one of the last Plan Commission meetings, and I talked about some of my concerns in regards to the process that these developers or applicants are going through. And it seems like we've got a pretty good process in front of us, where we've got a, you know, a preliminary process that they can go through, and then a final process that they can go through or go right to final. And I know Michael said not to mention any of the, the cases or applications that previously went through us, so I won't. But, you know, one of those went through that process of going through the preliminary and then going through the final. And when it went through the final, it got approved at Plan Commission, but then ultimately got rejected at Village Board. And I reached out to that developer, I personally did, just to get their viewpoint in regards to the process. And, you know, they're cordial, but you could tell they were frustrated, because they tried to go through a process to try to limit their risk and limit their exposure. And what they're really looking for was during the preliminary process, getting feedback, you know, from the Plan Commission and from the Village Board in key issues like density and zoning and engineering. And they feel like they went through that process but didn't get that feedback, or when they, when they were done with the preliminary process, they felt like, okay, we've got a good opportunity of making this development happen. So they spent a ton of money, spent a lot of money, you know, working with engineers, working with landscape architects, working with, you know, the architects, land planners, to go through the process. They went through several Plan Commissions where they, you know, we listened to the residents, you know, listened to their concerns, and then went to Village Board and ultimately got rejected because of zoning and density and all that. And they said, that's fine, but they really wish they would have heard that during the preliminary process. That's where they're looking for the feedback. And that applicant came back in front of the, the Village Board, went to a committee of the whole meeting with a revised plan, and they got some feedback. They got some feedback from the trustees. But there were still several trustees that, you know, maybe asked some questions, but you couldn't get the sense in regards to whether or not they could support this. And that's what they're looking for. They're looking for the feedback early on, so they can make the decision on moving forward or not. And my concern is, if we lead them on during a preliminary process and they spend this money in final and ultimately get rejected by Village Board, that's where we get egg on our face. You know, that's where we, you know, as a community, may not, you know, we're getting disrespected in regards to some of these, you know, better developers that are coming in front of us. And I don't want to scare those developers away, you know, which may lead to developers that aren't as sophisticated or are not as good or whatever. So I wanted to talk about the process tonight, and I thought to myself, you know, is there a way where we can get, you know, a read from the Village Board, who is essentially the decision-makers on this, first, in regards to, you know, providing them feedback, and if they get the, you know, positive feedback, then move to Plan Commission, where we'll work out all the details in regards to the grunt work, like you said, and then go back to Village Board, and you can refine it a little bit and make your decision on that. But have a process where they don't have to spend a lot of money and time in devoting, you know, their resources to an application where, you know, six months, nine months later, they just get rejected. So thoughts in regards to that?
I actually think that makes pretty good sense, Andy. Particularly when you're talking about specific types of developments that may have, we may have no interest in, and there's no point in sending them through the rigmarole of the, of the Planning Commission to come, and to come back to us to say, no, we, I never really supported that in the first place. And, and I think you're correct. So maybe we can work out something where we get them before us in a committee of the whole, before we even send them out to the Planning Commission to start going through all of those issues. I, I 100% agree with you on that.
Yeah, and maybe it doesn't have to be every application. I mean, I'm sure, you know, staff gets a feel in regards to, you know, which ones may be contentious, ones, ones, you know, maybe just, you know, we all understand that, you know, it's the right zoning and it's right density or whatever, that you can go through the typical process. But I think for the more ones that, you know, may cause issues or may have resident concerns, maybe have them come in front of you first to get essentially vibe in regards to, you know, what their, what your thoughts are. But if you could, and what I encourage you, during the, during those workshops, please provide your input in regards to what you're thinking. You know, asking some questions and being silent, you know, doesn't help them. You know, what I've heard is silence is dangerous from the development word. So when they don't hear feedback from the trustees, they may not move forward when you want them to move forward. So.
Andy, can I ask you a question real quick? Right now, with the preliminary process, there's a commission step as well as then the Village Board step. Are you suggesting that if there's the prelim, that it would just go to the Village Board at a cow, and then it comes to?
Well, personally, yeah. I don't know what my, my fellow commissioners think, but, but from my perspective, I mean, we're just a recommending body. You're the ultimate vote. And, you know, if you don't think that's a viable development or one that's right for the community, why is it even coming in front of us?
Well, some time ago, we had a, sort of a steering committee made up of two or three members of the Village Board. And they sort of screened proposals before they came to the, yeah. And that turned out to work against us. They would, they would make one agreement with the, the first committee, and then they'd come to the Plan Commission, and things would get changed again. And then they'd go to the Village Board, and they'd get changed a third time. And it led to an extreme amount of frustration. And at some point, we, we dropped that initial concept committee idea and had the, we had, we still, we maintained the concept idea, but we had the proposals be presented as a concept to the Plan Commission, where the Plan Commission then had the option of totally rejecting or making comments as to what they would like to see. And, and that's, that's pretty much the protocol that we're using now. And I don't know if what you're proposing would, would be workable in retrospect to what, what has happened previously.
I'd like to, I'm sorry, John, I'll say one thing. I, I think the idea, though, that, that Commissioner Heinem is talking about, I think if, that kind of comes to staff, okay? I'd be, not to dump on you to have to do this, but, you know, you, you have a feel for what's, you know, here's, here's development of single-family homes or whatever it is, and then more than likely, that's not going to be an issue. And then here's the ones that, you know, for example, we might question something on whatever it's going with flooding, or is it, or we're changing zoning, or something like that, where it might require a lot more, you know, opinions from different people, and it might make, create the angst that you're talking about. And those are the ones, I think, that it's kind of a judgment call, I think, from your experience, maybe, you know, and staff and Michael and, and John, to just say, you know what, maybe take a look at this. What do, you know, just, just as a jumping off point, because I agree. They go through a lot of work, and then you go through a lot of work, and then it comes here, and then it's like changed for whatever reason, and good, bad, or otherwise. And, and the other point, one quick point I wanted to make about the renting versus the buying, I don't think renting is the problem. But Bill Lamb headed up the comp plan revision. I was on that committee. We dealt with all kinds of people on that. And, and as much as I, I think we have a lot of great developers, I also know one thing. They want to put in as much as they can dollar-wise, and I think Plainfield's in a very unique position to be, to be thoughtful through that process, because I think we're sitting in the best position possible. I think we're the ones with the open land. We're the ones where it's a desirable community, and, and this is where people are going to want to come. And I think, you know, taking, taking that, that step with those plans and going through that is, is the right process, because we dealt with the developer in there. We, we went back and forth over a few things. I think density around the downtown is certainly, but I think there's some other things that I don't want to build just for the sake of building or filling out a subdivision, because that's what they're coming back to you and us saying, oh, if you don't do it now, well, you know, you're not going to get any better than this, and we're going to build this. That's how many times have we heard that in the course of the last few years? So, you know, I think the work that you do is great, and I, I know what goes into Plan and Commission and is on it. But I, I do think that your, your point is absolutely the right way to go, Andy. I really think it needs to, you know, if it looks like it might be something controversial, I think that is something that goes through and says, hey, do we, do we look at this or not? Because if we're just going to reject it, I, I don't want to put those people through a lot.
A few comments.
Okay, John.
What I was going to say was that we had also, I think it was incorporated, and I know, the, we had one developer who commissioned a study, and it showed that we were underserving grossly the multifamily. And that kind of goes to what the chairman was saying too, that there is a need in the city for multiple family. The problem comes in, to get back to Andy's point, is how are we supposed to assess it? Because if we only look at density, well, okay, I know we're not supposed to really talk about cases, but one developer said, well, they couldn't really see that they could build anything really less and make it a goable. But we did have that discussion. That was rejected, and now that developer is cut by about a quarter, I think, the number of units, and it's apparently into discussions with the Village Board. The other thing, though, we have is where there is really, we don't know the priorities, and that's kind of what Commissioner Heinem was going for. That we looked at one parcel, and the Plan Commission said, well, the outer parts of it are still going to stay commercial, and let's put some rooftops on the inner portion. Let's zone that down zoning to residential, put the multifamilies in, thinking the rooftops will allow the outside to grow, and rather than being vacant forever, it was, where I moved, it was cornfields, and I've been here 18 years. And so that was the theory, and figured, well, if it has a little bit of large density, the Village Board can work that out. Because what we saw was, well, okay, conceptually, it makes sense to do a donut for the, but that one got voted, I don't know if it voted no because of the density, or just simply because we can't downsize it. There really wasn't any direction that was given to us. So what made sense when we made the recommendation still kind of makes sense, because we don't know what was wrong with it, where if we are then supposed to say, oh, no, it's been planned to be commercial, it's going to stay commercial until it becomes commercial, or do we say, oh, well, it makes sense to kind of pick away at this? Well, does it make sense to pick away at that? Does it make sense to pick away at the hospital? Or does it not make any sense to pick away? And that's where we may be on the same book, but it's like volumes of books. And that's the real problem we have. And then the process seemed to be working for another project that went through the concept phase, went up to the village, and then when it came back to us, we looked at the notes from the village, and we said, well, the applicant appears, it's not within the vision for division, but it appears that the applicant met and jumped through all the hoops that were put in this path by both the Planning Commission and the Village Board. So we approved it, only to find, at the end of the day, it was just outright not approved. And that's really where I have a little bit of concern too, because if we do do something where we say, okay, let's continue this meeting, because it needs to go up to the Village Board to have them pronounce on this issue, whether it's zoning or density or whatever, and then we can build back. Well, I suppose we can do that, but we need to have where it's not up to the board and said, no, send us the whole thing, and we've, in essence, waited a month for no direction. We need to be either told what page we're supposed to look to, or there has to be some kind of pronouncement so we can, or staff can interpret it correctly, because we spent on the three things that I've talked about, multiple meetings on and hours at those meetings. We had, by the Development on the River, we had our engineer called in. We had their engineer present for two meetings. There was extensive questioning on that. And at the end of the day, you know, do we really need that? Do we really need to have the drawings done? You know, if there can be some process that we can, say, for the developers, you know, maybe it's just we continue the meeting for a month, and we just have an add-on to your agenda for meetings before to answer the specific question posed by the Planning Commission. I mean, it's not uncommon for a tight schedule to come before us, but if we're continuing from one meeting to the next, maybe something like that can be done. I, I really don't know. But it would make my life a lot easier, I know, if I had specific, I know, we, we serve at the will of the trustees and the mayor. And if we just simply knew what the will was, it'd be a lot easier to do our job.
I guess one of the things, we, maybe we can get some direction, is whether it be support from the commissioners to basically take, because what I'm hearing is some of the initial investment in the concept plan, and some of the potential frustration from the development community, to take that directly to the whole board. I mean, I've heard from several commissioners, but is there a consensus on, on the Plan Commission to revise that process? We said, at one point, that's what we used to do. Then it became perhaps a little more formal. We did take it, then we've taken it to the Plan Commission over the past number of years.
Is it, do the trustees think the process is working the way it is right now?
I'm sorry?
Do you guys think the process is working the way it is now?
I do.
I think it could. The answer is, because of the things that were just discussed, not terribly well in the last few examples. But I think the process itself is okay. I wouldn't change Commissioner Heinem's recommendation. I wouldn't change what we have, because I think if you do come to the board first, then you get locked in. And the board doesn't go into the detail that the Plan Commission does. What you need to know is what's on our mind, what are our criteria, and that's what I think you're asking for. I speak for myself, but I think it's fairly consistent with the rest of the board too. We do pay attention to what the residents have to say. If there's a high interest in residents or concern, we, we address that. We have to make a decision on our part, which way to go. That's one of the issues. Another one is appearance. We're very, as Tricia Minucci just said, we want Plainfield to look nice. We feel in a good position. We want a good level of Plainfield, but we want really good developments. We like the developments to be successful. We don't want to be so unreasonable that they can't make any money. They have to make money at it. But we want them to deliver the product that, that we want. There's a third area of sensitivity, because we do have a river flowing through here, and that's the flooding issues. And it can be the flooding issues. And it can be handled, the case that we just approved last week basically came up with the information that we really needed. You didn't, haven't seen it, but they said it existed. Well, I said, show up with it. They did show up with it, and the board said, okay, now we understand, it is not going to flood. So those are the kind of triggers. But I think the process is fine, I'd rather see it go through the planning commission. But you've got to know what's on our mind, or where we might pull the trigger. Density is a strange one, because a long time ago...
I'll take back a little bit on that. I don't know that I need to know necessarily where your mind is, because I guess I'm going to still ask the questions, I'm still going to want to know what I believe is to be the right decision for the community. Whether that's in agreement with you or not, it may or may not be. So in that respect, I guess I don't really need to know where you are. I think what maybe the frustration comes in on this side is, is maybe sometimes there's not a lot of consistency between your votes, and between maybe the board members themselves. So trying to figure out where we should spend a lot of our time on certain cases, we do it, and then we make the decisions, make the changes, it goes to you guys, and it's kind of like, oh, that's not an issue, never mind, you know, we're good with this. And I think that's where my help would be for me, is maybe just to see some more consistency. And I don't know if it's more communication with you guys, with staff, or what that answer is. But I don't know that there's a better process, and that's why I was asking if you think it's working or not. I just know that the way it's been lately, I think it's been a little frustrating on this side, that's all.
Well, consistency is a significant issue. I certainly, I tend to plan commissions generally, too. So I'm watching the process, I understand your frustration. It takes me back to what it was in 2005, and six, and seven, they had the same kind of things. And we were doing a whole lot better, and we can do better. I think if you do know what criteria we're likely to use, where our judgment is coming from, you may or may not agree, and that's okay. But you need to understand what we may be looking at. And I think the things I mentioned are things which are trigger points for us. Say, the density is one which is a little bit different, because you can have high-density products that look nice. Making something R4 doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be shabby rentals. The Lakelands happens to be zoned R4. You could put up, you know, apartments and everything else. Well, it didn't turn out that way. So the zoning, it's a matter of what their desire is. If they want to make something that looks nice, we would certainly support that, and that's important to us.
And I know, I think all of us understand, we're an advisory board, and you mentioned a specific case. Several of you do attend some of our meetings, our planning commission meetings. And I know frustration on my part, especially more recently, was we kind of wondered if any of our recommendations are actually moving upwards. I mean, were you looking at the minutes? Did you take a look at some of the testimony? Because a number of points were made. But we've had some testimonies that lasted multiple meetings, many hours, and then we get feedback from the board reports saying that those same questions either were ignored, or kind of brushed over. And that's kind of from my point, I'd like to kind of know, do you think our role works? Is it work that's vital of this process? Do you want us to keep doing it? What could change that would maybe ease some of this frustration, I think, not just for us, but for you, and then also applicants that come before us? That's what I was hoping, I saw workshop and roundtable, I was hoping we'd get a little dialogue about some of those issues.
From my point of view, I think the planning commission does a great service, I think the mayor did it appropriately upfront. I think we have value for it, I think it needs to be done, because the village board is not going to do that. You go into the kind of details that we can't. We've got to assume, and seeing it in practice, I know you're doing it, that I'm comfortable with the kind of digging in that we're not likely to do. So I think, definitely want to continue doing what you're doing. I say, from our point of view, we need to provide you the guidelines that we use to make decisions. We don't all agree, by the way, on those guys. But those are the things which we make decisions on our own mind, and decide how to vote on it. One thing, let me just talk about the comp plan, because some of you were on the committee, and some of us up here were as well. We put it together as our best guess as to where things should be. There are some things which trustee Renzi talked, or Commissioner Renzi talked about it. There's one which is circled with commercial, and it's a donut behind it. We left it as a zoning, the comp plan committee, left it as commercial, that's where it was. We weren't going to change what was on the outside, we said, okay, maybe something will happen. But I think Commissioner Renzi is right, it could be vacant for a very long time. So if you're going to fill it, maybe you could fill it with something which is residential. The question is, what kind of residential? And how should it look? And then you need to take a look at the residents. You know, there are some places around that. So there's a variety of judgments, and we may have seen some things early on that require pushback. All of a sudden, as Alloofed alluded to, we've had three major apartment complexes proposed. You've got the Springs, which already has gone in, has been very successful. We've got two others, which have been talked about, one by the hospital, one by the police station, and a townhome development. It's a lot on our table all of a sudden. Is that the right thing for Plainfield? Well, that's a judgment call. People see one success, they say, hey, we can do more. That may or may not be the best thing. So that's why they're getting a little pushback. We're sort of saying, hey, slow the process down a little bit, let's pick the right one or so. And sometimes the pushback pays off. I think the developer, the one we proved last week, they downsized it some, they made it village streets, they made a number of improvements which I think will benefit the residents there. And that was something which only happened because we pushed back the first time. They came back and said, well, yeah, we can do it after all. And that's good. That's the kind of give and take that sometimes works for us. And this is where the two of us, you know, play a role in it, and end up with something which is good.
Absolutely. But I think that what the applicant was looking for is when they went through the preliminary process, getting that feedback then, versus going down a road, doing a bunch of engineering, and then going back to the drawing board.
Yeah, that would be desirable. But sometimes you don't know what kind of feedback you can give them until you get into it a little bit. And I don't think the board's opinion, and if I'm guessing, was finalized until we got closer to seeing the final plans. Upfront, we could not have said what we finally said. We wouldn't have known enough to do that, to be honest about it.
Well, density, I mean, I mean, density is a major issue, right?
Well, density was part of the issue there, but part of it was appearance.
Sometimes it takes exactly this process, as Bill explained. For instance, when we did Grand Park, there was a lot of pushing back. And Grand Park didn't go through in one fell swoop, I'll tell you.
It was one year, a full year, I think, I remember right now.
I think that goes with Springbank, too. That was a, that was a tiger.
And Springbank, though, when they came back, and then the second company bought Springbank, remember what they came in for, the product they came in and said, this is what we absolutely have to have, and there's no way we can develop this unless we have multifamily and apartments and everything else, we're just going to walk away from it. And we said no, and they didn't walk away from it. And we've had that experience two or three times. So I mean, look, I can give you the guidance that I go on, is what is this going to look like twenty years from now? Right? After the next rental trend or whatever goes away, what are we going to end up with? And John, I understand what you said about, you know, that a lot's been a cornfield for eighteen years, but, oh, the Plainfield was a cornfield eighteen years ago. And it sure isn't now. So I mean, we're at a point where I do think we have to be very specific and vigilant with what we approve. And I don't want it to be a hard process, I don't want to scare anybody away. But in the same respect, I don't want to develop for the sake of developing, because everybody's going to come in with the same product, it's going to be massive, high-density stuff, because that's what they can turn a buck on now. Twenty-five years ago, now, from now, when you and I are still living here, I still want this to be a nice, family-friendly community. And I don't know that we necessarily have the same goals that every developer has. So...
And I'm not here to oppose it, I completely agree with you. And that's why, that's why I'm thinking, is there a way of, you know, coming to the middles, or meeting ground with the applicant, with the developers, so they don't get frustrated through the process. And I think there really is some value of having a more controversial application go in front of the village board first, and getting, so that way we can listen to what you're concerned about. You know, is it density, or is it this? So then, that gives us direction in regards to, what should we be asking questions? What are the details that we need to dive into, you know, during that application, so that you can hear that, and then make your decision, you know, when it goes in front of village board. But when it doesn't go in, when we're the first ones here, I have no idea what you guys are thinking. And that's why it'd be great to get that feedback early on, so then that way we can advise you in regards to what you're looking for.
Well, let me just make a quick statement. And all due respect, though, I think the ultimate criteria in our mind is, is it an asset to Plainfield twenty years into the future? And that, your opinion is probably just as good as ours. So if you take that as the criteria, you'd be happy with that twenty years from now, rather than as a piecemeal thing. We look at things on a piecemeal basis, that's a tough decision. But that's ultimately where we're coming from. Is this something we want to see in Plainfield? And I think you guys have the same valid opinion, or more so than ours. So I would use that, rather than come to us, because if you come to us too early, we're going to say, well, yeah, that could be okay, we need to see more details. And then it goes back to you anyway. And I don't know that's a positive benefit to the process.
Mr. Rasic, do you have something?
Yes, sir. You know, it's a reoccurring thought and a pattern with your board and with this board here. Are we valuable? You know, I asked that question to myself, is this board valuable? And when you, a number of you men have said this evening, are we valuable? Well, obviously you are. And it was also questioned, do you read, I know it was an open-ended question from someone, do you read our notes? Do you, you may not attend our planning meetings, our planning and zoning meetings, but do you read the minutes of those? I, for one, can absolutely say, yes, I do. You know, the one situation, and it had been mentioned by a couple individuals, the two terms, advisory versus approval. You are an advisory board, and you are in that particular fashion. No one holds you responsible for any decision you make. They literally don't. Because the approval board is right here. Oftentimes, I was on the planning and zoning board twelve years ago, for two and a half years. And I used to ask the very same question, no one listens. I, you know, I find that no one listened to what I said, perhaps, when I said, I want this. And they said, well, we don't necessarily want what you want. And so it becomes, it becomes a balancing thing oftentimes. And I know it becomes very frustrating. You think that your work literally falls on deaf ears, and that is absolutely not true. John Renzi said he's concerned about the process. I'm very concerned about the process also, because I say, we have to deliver a good product. And how do you deliver a good product? You individuals, you men on the board, discuss something, it comes forward to us, we refine it. That's the only term I could possibly use to validate exactly what I say in the form of rejection, by refining it. Because here, what I have to say is, I really view the developmental process with somewhat of a jaundice eye, in the sense, number one, most developers, in my fourteen years' experience on being on a planning and zoning board, and also being a trustee in the village of Plainfield, I have seen one developer after another say to himself, what can I get away with? And I'm not putting anybody down on your side, or putting anybody down on our side. They'll say, hey, I'll ask for four hundred houses, or four hundred units here, when I know it can only accept two hundred. What if they do get the four hundred? They have won the battle. I can remember, I'm going to give you a little story of, oh, this happened, let me see, about sixty-five years ago, I was at YMCA camp, are you ready for this? And I said to the counselor at the camp, I want to swim across the lake. And he said, you can't swim across the lake. It was a good-sized lake. I said, then I'll do it tonight. And then it's the same thing. What I'm saying is, you have a process to go through, and a lot of times it's rejected. And it just happens in that particular fashion, and you wish it wouldn't happen in that fashion. But as I specifically stated, and I'm not condemning anybody, advisory versus approval is really a big difference. And everything evolves, there's an evolution in process. I'm going to give a little more history. Nineteen sixty-three, I bought my first home, after we were married, my wife and I were married fifty-one years ago. I bought my first home. You know, that house couldn't be built? It could be built, but it wouldn't be sold in Plainfield anymore. You know why? Because you ordered the house on Monday, and you moved in on Saturday. It was a national home. Someone had already done it for me. But I bought a house that was built on a Monday, and it was completed by Saturday. Could you imagine them bringing that to us right now? And so, you know what, it's a total process. The process is evolutionary, and you evolve, we evolve. We like your ideas most of the time, I agree. But when the disagreement occurs, then our snouts get a little bit bent. Mine, when it happens here, yours, when it happens to you. And all I can say is, we try to work together, and I'm very pleased with our application and how we're working together. There are some minor disagreements, but that's the way life evolves, and the process evolves. And like I say, I'm happy that all of you individuals are there. I attended a good number of meetings, and I still stand back and I say, those people are really smart. You know what you're talking about, because you do your homework. And all I can say is, thank you for doing so.
I just have one brief question about YMCA camp, sixty years ago. Why were you going to YMCA camp in your thirties?
It was a quarter world.
Oh, Lord.
I haven't gotten a chance to say anything at all. I don't want to bore you, but just to touch on a few of the topics, how we talked about process. Some of you may know, or may not know, I work for the City of Aurora Development, Building and Permits Department, I've been there about twenty years. So obviously, you know, Aurora's the second biggest city in the state. There's a difference in scale between what we do up there and what we do here. But there's also a lot of similarities. And, I mean, one thing is, we know since, you know, prior to the recession, I mean, I, or just like everywhere, I mean, staffs have been downsized. So I mean, we've got two planners here that work really hard. I mean, Mike and John, I mean, they're doing the planning, they're doing economic development, they're doing historic preservation, they're trying to wear a lot of hats. And, I mean, in Aurora, in a bigger city like that, obviously you've got a city council with, you know, wards, you know, that actually represent certain areas of the city. And the process there's a little bit, I mean, the beginning part of the process, the difference is between, I think, what we do here, and they do it here, too, is it's held at a staff level for a certain period of time. And there kind of, there's two steps. One, first one's called development services, that really starts out as like three staff members. You know, one from engineering, one from zoning, and one from the building department. And that's where pretty much all developments start. And it may be held there for several meetings, and then it goes on to what's called a planning council, which is a larger body, but it's still mostly city staff members. But, you know, at that point, you know, city council members are obviously able to sit in and watch it early on. And we talked about that, you know, concept part of it, where maybe they can get some feedback early on, on a concept, so that they don't go on too far. Well, the reason, or the way they do it there is, essentially, they hold it at that staff level. They won't even let it go on to planning commission until they're pretty sure most of the bugs have been worked out, you know. So it's a longer process, obviously. But it, once it's released from there, then it's, you know, kind of the same thing here, it goes to planning commission, then they have what's called a planning development committee, which is three aldermen, goes there, then the committee of the whole, then finally the city council. So I mean, it's a multi-step process. But it's really, in the end, you know, it's kind of the same. It's just that, like Jim talked about earlier, I mean, the problem with the developer is, you know, say, okay, let's go to council, let's go to village board first, and try to get the answer we want there, and then come back to planning commission. You know, that kind of bouncing back and forth. I mean, really, the only thing that can hold that together in that process is the staff, you know. And there's a lot of smaller cases where staff can say, you know what, this doesn't even have to go through this concept process, it can just, it's pretty straightforward, it can go ahead, it follows the comp plan, or whatever. Obviously, there's some that, you know, probably need to have that concept planned, and you know, maybe it's controversial enough that it does need to get at least that kind of, in, you know, first blush from the village board first, before it even comes to us to start getting into the detail, and the developer starts spending more money on it. So, you know, and I guess the burden falls on staff to have to kind of filter that, and, you know, figure out what one's doing and don't. But, you know, it's, I mean, the thing is, I mean, we've talked about, like, multifamily. I mean, and, I mean, we hate to admit it, we can say, sure, you know, I've lived here in Plainfield for over twenty years now, and, you know, I've been in two houses. I mean, and I've been on the planning commission, this is my second round, I was on it way back in the boom years, too, for just a year or two. But, you know, we are in competition with the region. I mean, we can say, well, we're going to just hold our standards, and let builders come to us, or we're going to, you know, stay farm fields until we think the development's ready. But we've seen, I think historically in the past, where some of the developments gone past Plainfield, and gone to, you know, Boeing Brook, or Joliet, or Oswego, or whatever. And, you know, I mean, sure, we're part of a larger reason, but we're also in competition, you know, with a lot of those things. I mean, a perfect example would be what happened with the Dominix chain going out of business, you know. of business, you know. Obviously, the, you know, Mariano's is one that's gone in, looked at those locations. Aurora was lucky enough, they only had one Dominix location, Mariano snapped it up. Shorewood was lucky enough, they had one location, Mariano snapped it up. Naperville's sitting right there, right now, with three empty Dominix. And, you know, you have an empty anchor store like that, it starts to pull down that whole shopping center it's in. And I mean, that kind of economic, you know, impact, it starts to add up. So, I mean, we obviously focus a lot on residential. And I mean, obviously, the multifamily, I think we can all agree right now, that seems to be the segment of the market that's moving a little bit more than single. Single family, for the most part, I think is just, it's kind of going back and infilling developments that were started. There's still a lot of vacant lots. I mean, for the most part, I thought that Springs development was, the whole process was, I thought was pretty successful. But it was kind of a unique thing. I think that property was sitting there, you came in with a motivated developer. It seemed like everybody kind of agreed that the location wasn't bad. I mean, there was some controversy about it, but now that it's all done, I think, it appears to me to be a very successful development. And so, you know, rather than being totally reactive, I think that's the kind of thing we should talk about. Okay, maybe we don't want too much multifamily, but if it's going to come, where else could it go? You know, where, and that's where we had that discussion about, gee, this, and we, again, it was somewhat reactive. A couple more developers came in. We thought that the one location was not a good for multifamily, but the other one was worth looking at. So, you know, but again, it's somewhat reactive. It's not like we were recruiting them. I mean, they kind of came to us. So, I mean, those kind of things happen in the process, and it's just, you know, how do we, and I, personally, I mean, the one that just passed last week, I mean, you know, maybe it was frustrating for the developer. I actually voted against that at planning commission, because I had too many concerns about the flooding at the time. I would have liked, but everything I've heard about the changes I made, sounds appropriate. I mean, the density went down, the streets got wider, and hopefully, you know, there's a little more of a safety margin there for the flooding. So, I mean, I think for the most part, I think it, it works, but I think it just, you know, if things really start to pick up and get busier again, we've got to be ready to figure out, how do we want to react? I mean, the case on 59, to me, that one is really frustrating, because I know the same developer's been here twice. And like hearing this development, or the proposal tonight, about relocating that memorial. I think we can all agree that that memorial sitting there on 59 is, I mean, it's, it's an idea who, at one time, it was, it was a good idea, but problem now is, it's kind of forgotten sitting there. I mean, one good traffic accident could take that out, anyway. I mean, I'd love to see that memorial also get relocated over here. And I'm personally not a fan of the way those two streets intersect with 59, Oak and Arnold. I would love to have seen that be reconfigured into a 90-degree intersection with a right-in, right-out, like most of those streets on 59. And I thought there was an opportunity, when the developer came, gee, we can do it all. We can get the memorial moved, we can reconfigure those streets, and we can get, you know, some kind of a development there to generate some tax revenue. But it hasn't happened yet, so thank you.
I also would like to say thank you. Thank you to the Village Board and the trustees for letting us come here and have this discussion with you. I think that the comments and the insights that you shared with us will help us to do our job better, to provide you that advisory function. And I think working together like we're doing here tonight, and going forward, we're going to provide the best outcomes that we can for the residents of Plainfield. So, thanks again.
I agree with Commissioner Green.
Got anything else, Jim?
No, I don't.
I'd just like to make one, one more comment to Commissioner Sikovas. I do, I do want to see the development come. And I, I can speak now as myself, I'm, my other fellow trustees can answer for themselves. I just want to see things in balance, because during some other conversations we've had, we had a developer come and conceptually put this plan together, where he was going to take this acreage, and some of it was going to be high-end family, single-family, medium-single-family, townhomes and apartments, all in this section, with a school built right in the middle of it. And they were going to do like those pockets, and it's just like, that, that can't be more unrealistic, just from building the schools and maintaining, and all the costs that go with it. But that's not their problem, once they're done and they do their development here. As you all know, I don't have to tell you your jobs, because the planning commission certainly dives into all that stuff, and always has. I've had experience with that. But I mean, that's just what, you know, we get that, and then we get, then, like I said, we get the, well, if you don't build this now, it's not coming. Well, I don't believe that. I do believe, I don't mean we should just always just sit back and wait for, for any opportunity, economic or residential, but at the same time, it's just a matter of balancing. If you look at Creekside Crossing, those duplexes, homes out there are absolutely beautiful. I mean, those are, those are very nice developments. Obviously, the Lakelands are, you know, just in a class by themselves in a way. But I mean, Patriot Square's a very nice development. I think when it's done, you know, in those kinds of ways, I just, I just don't want to give up some of the roadways and commercial areas we have, because we have, we don't have as much as we'd love to have, compared to these other towns, they have all these highways that intersect. And so, so speaking for myself, that's where I was coming from with the 140, Third and Round 30 development, and, you know, some of the others that way. I just, you know, I, we, we need that commercial development, we need those roads coming through that we may get some, someday. My grandchildren may be on the board by that time. But I mean, but the point is, is that the commercial development needs, needs a place to go, and that's, that's why I wanted to hold on to that. So, but I, I really think it's a matter of managing it. And I, like I said, I hate to put this on staff, but I think you guys are the link between us, really.
And that's why you saw that case as a concept, because by definition, that was a controversial case, because whenever you're transforming, i.e., zone, identified zoned commercial to rooftops, by definition, that's a huge question mark. And then generally, it's those question marks, those types of cases that staff will bring an application through a concept process, because staff's not clear, or sees it potentially as a, potentially very controversial question, and therefore, it comes through the process by, as a concept. And maybe that is a reflection of some frustration here, because by definition, they're potentially controversial.
So this is my last point about the process, I promise.
No, no.
So I'm a, I'm a civil engineer that works in the development world, and, you know, I go in front of a lot of different municipalities, you know, throughout the greater Chicago area. And, you know, speaking from the development world, and strictly this is just from the development world, what they like to see is, if they can come in and get a quick decision in regards to a controversial project. Those are the communities, and they've identified a lot of those communities that do that very successfully, and they can get a vote, quick, and then move on. Then there's municipalities that, you know, is dragging on for, I'm not saying we're doing that, but, you know, there are processes with other municipalities that just drag on forever and ever and ever, and they have a bad image when it comes to the development world. So I guess what I'm just saying is, there's perceptions in regards to different communities, and what I'd like to do is, if we can make a vote relatively soon in the process, I think that will help our image in the development world.
Good point.
Any other last comments?
Yep.
One last comment.
I had to ask.
Andy, you said you'd like to see quickly, decisions made quickly within the process. Well, this board and a number of people know, one of my favorite sayings is, decisions made in haste, you live with in leisure. Oftentimes, I'm fearful of, you know, really rapid decision, because I've made a lot of decisions in my life, personal, professional, et cetera, et cetera, that probably would not scan very well on the lifeline. But, you know, I know John Renzi had stated it, and a couple other people have stated it, there's an evolution, not only in development, but there's an evolution in process. And I was thinking about a particular development, I've got to go back in history, I'm sorry. I can remember this particular development, because I went to look at it. It was in 1967, on Essington Road, north of Louis Joliet Mall, which was in the process of being built. They put 12 condos there. And I said, who would ever buy one of these? A condo in Joliet, a condo in Plainfield, was so unheard of at that particular time, almost, you know, what, 45 years ago. It was totally unheard of. Now, what I'm alluding to is the simple evolution in process, evolution in development. And it does occur. What we say is totally radical today, will be perhaps acceptable in the future. And we just have to work together to get to that particular point. And just in closure, thank, enclosure in about five minutes, I'd like to say, again, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for giving all of your great ideas. I really appreciate it.
Any other last comments?
Yeah, just quickly. I think predictability is important. I think you've got some sense of perhaps where we're coming from, and, you know, let's keep feeding it back to each other, so we make the process even more efficient, if you will, more predictable. Maybe more of these meetings, because the excellent dialogue, because everybody has said something tonight, which is good, that gives you a flavor for where we're coming from. One other thing which hasn't been touched on, you talked about the developers would like to be able to do things quickly. We've actually done quite a number of things quickly, and nothing's ever happened. There's an awful lot of projects that you've looked at, and that we have approved, that have never happened. And so, whether it's, the economy was probably most of it, but on the other hand, we all need to work together. We'd like it to be successful. We want, end up with a good result for the town as well, so.
Mayor Collins, may I say one last thing?
Absolutely.
No, just...
How many one last things do we get?
You already had your one last thing.
You know what I'd, I'd recommend, I know trustee Lamb goes to almost every planning and zoning meeting, doesn't he? I think, he thinks they're going to serve donuts, but they're not. Anyway, you know what I would advise all of our trustees, if you have an opportunity, and if, I'm not saying you do go, if you have an opportunity, just stop in, say hi to everybody, watch the process. You got to be, remember what is being done, and it's very important to be part of the process.
We're on TV.
Pardon?
You can watch us on TV also.
You know what? Nothing, Mr. Sikovia, like being here in person and watching it all. There's the whole process. You get a little bit closer to the action. And like I'd say, if you're, have an opportunity on a Tuesday night after our board meeting, come over for a second. Watch the action of the planning and zoning.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Can I, can I say something? I was just going to...
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Rassich will still be here later tonight.
Yes.
For the rest of you that aren't.
Bill, you got any other one last things? Because Jim already got his second one last thing.
Does anybody else got anything?
No, we're good.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. Michael, any last things we need to wrap up?
We got, we got the reminders, but thanks for taking time out of your week, guys, to come in here. Much appreciated. Reminders, it's August 4th, there's the next Village Board meeting. August the 5th is the planning commission. The 7th will be a concert in Settlers Park, and August 11th will be our next committee of the whole.
Wait a second. I just want to, on behalf of the Plan Commission, I just want to thank the Village Board and Mayor Collins for inviting us here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn from the Plan Commission.
Adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Kiefer, in a second.
Second.
Commissioner Green, all those in favor on the Plan Commission to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Thank you. I got a motion in a second to adjourn the Village Board meeting. Thank you. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Thank you. We are adjourned.